Good evening, welcome to the December 12th session of Bellingham City Council. This is our last city council meeting of the year. Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. And if you could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to have our grand poobah, Mr. Gene Knudsen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
April Barker.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Gene Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Lillquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Terry Bornham.
Here.
Okay, we're going to start the evening with our 15-minute public comment period. Do we not have anyone signed up? Is there anyone who wishes to speak at public comment that hasn't had an opportunity to sign up? Yeah? No? Okay. Wow, going once? Twice? Three times? Okay, so we have no public comment period this evening. Then we will go right to the review of our afternoon committee meetings. And our first meeting was Public Works Public Safety, and Terry Bornham is the chair.
Thank you, Pinky. We had one item before the committee today. It was an ordinance adopting a base rate for the 2017 transportation impact fee. The transportation impact fee, or the TIF, base rate for each PM, peak hour vehicle trip is adjusted each year according to the actual cost of construction and the program costs of capital improvements needed to accommodate new growth and development in the annual six-year transportation improvement program. The 2017 TIF-based rate represents an increase from the 2016 TIF, and the amendment to the TIF schedule is necessary to help recover the proportional share of the cost of transportation infrastructure to accommodate new growth and development in Bellingham. Staff recommends approval of the attached ordinance adopting a base rate of $2,138 for 2017 and revising the TIF rate schedule accordingly as Table 19.06.040A. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, we have a motion in front of us, adopting a base rate for the 2017 transportation impact fees per BMC 19.06. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. And that's the end of that committee. Parks and Recreation was our next committee, and Michael Lillquist is the chair.
Thank you, Pinky. We had one item before the committee today. It was a resolution to establish fees for the use of city parks and recreation facilities. In accordance with Municipal Code Section 8.04.030C, the city council establishes parks and rec facility fees by resolution. This afternoon, Recreation Manager Dick Henry presented the proposed fee changes in 2017. The facility fees were last modified in 2013. As Dick explained this afternoon, it was rather a very thorough review of all of our fees, and it wasn't so much an increase, although there were some small increases, but some as a harmonization or simplification of our fees. For example, at Civic Field, you can now rent by the hour than by the game, because not all games are the same length. Fiscal note says these fee changes won't significantly increase revenue. There is expectation to be some revenue increases in some areas, but not overall. This afternoon, the committee unanimously recommended we vote to approve the fee change by resolution, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? We have a motion in front of us. All right, so, motion is to establish the fees for the use of the city parks and recreation facilities. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero.
And the committee.
Thank you. Next committee was Lake Wacom Reservoir and Natural Resources, and Dan Hamel is the chair.
Thank you, Pinky. We had one item before us this afternoon. The committee was asked to provide direction to staff regarding mitigation banks versus an in-lu fee model. The committee and council as a whole had rigorous discussion after a presentation by natural resources staff. The content is fairly technical. I would encourage the public to watch this afternoon's committee meeting if they're interested in the subject. The committee provided direction to continue the mitigation bank model. I don't know if there's any further comments from the committee or council as a whole? Okay, end of committee report.
Thanks, Dan. Next was Committee of the Whole. We had four items in front of us today, and the first one was an update on the work of the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force. The presentation was done by Dan Hamel, who serves on the task force. And Dan, if I may, I'd like to ask you to elaborate a little bit about what we talked about today.
Sure, I'll give a brief overview. Basically, the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force has been meeting for just over a year. It's comprised of 24 members, including four from the city of Bellingham, Mayor, myself, Jeff Brubaker from Community Paramedic, and Darlene Peterson from Courts, along with County Council representation and many others from the community as a whole, and experts within the criminal justice system. The steering, pardon me, the Prevention and Reduction Task Force is comprised of a steering committee, a triage facility committee, a behavioral health committee, and a legal and justice systems committee, which is the one that I serve on. They provide a council and update on the Phase Two part of the program here, and that is for the triage facility, the recommendation for the triage facility. The capital costs for that are $7 million. Annual operating costs are $4 to $4.5 million. That's projected to begin construction 2017, and that is two 16-bed facilities that are co-located at the same location with a permeable wall in between them. One is for substance use disorder treatment, and the other is for mental health illness crisis treatment. This does provide an option for our officers and sheriff's deputies to have a third option other than the emergency department or jail to take a person. This is a voluntary commitment, so this is not an involuntary commitment pursuant to RCW 1038-110. The Behavioral Health Committee is also looking at early intervention programs, pre-arrest diversion, and the Legal and Justice Committee is also looking at that as an option, as well as pre-trial risk assessment. One of the main takeaways that I have from serving on that task force for the past years is that when we take the silos down in between the groups that operate, we tend to work more effectively. I know that sounds simplistic, but it's true. We have great discussion and debate, and although there are many perspectives within the criminal justice world, they're all done respectfully and towards the goal of improving our criminal justice system. I don't know if Mayor had anything else to add to that.
No, I think you covered it very well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. The next item we had, we had a report out on the demographics of the city of Bellingham employees, which was done by Brian Heinrich and Casey, our Human Resources Manager. Just a little background on this is, in September, while we were going through the process of our comprehensive plan and talking about equitability, we also talked about what kind of example we, as the city, are being in regards to diversity. And in order to do that, we had to figure out baseline what our actual demographics were of our city employees before we can see if there's any changes we need to do or where we stood. So we did have a report out on that today. And we learned that we did have a few things where we recognized that we have a little bit of work to do in regards to diversity, not only in different walks of life, but also, especially when it comes to women. We have, seems to have a short, it doesn't look like it, because you have a woman mayor and three women city council, but that's because it's really important for us to have that, personally have that representation here. But as far as the city goes, we do need to diversify a little bit more, and we're looking at what tactics we're going to use, including maybe that our outreach for recruiting starts way before the application, that we're going to certain places so we can include as many people in the process as well, and we're making sure that we're giving people an opportunity. So that was a very interesting report out, and again, this is just kind of the tip of the iceberg, really, in figuring out what we're going to do and how we are going to be as a city. But that was, if anybody wants more information on that, that was, again, in our afternoon committee and some information's in our packet. The next item we had before us was the Waterfront District Implementation Status Report, and this was by Ted Carlson, our Public Works Director, and Tara Sundin, our Community and Economic Development Manager. The main information that we were talking about today was an update on our district energy, and this, for those down in the, this is down at the waterfront, and this is all in support of an eco-district, which, you know, is better recovery on water and heat and less, you know, some carbon mitigation. And so, these are things that, as a city, that is very important to us, and we're trying to figure out how to do this. So, the update on the district heating actually was, we're kind of trying to get through it, because it's very complicated, and we have a few things to overcome. Some of those are, what kind of vendors, how big of a system, whether it's a two-pipe or a five-pipe, and I know that means nothing to very few people, but it's about, it's about the fact that whether we can do just supply heat through district heating, or we can also supply cooling, which has a greater impact in regards to our carbon mitigation. There is opportunity for waste heat recovery, but pretty much the way it was left this afternoon is we still have a little bit farther to go, even though our time window is getting closer, to figure out what we have to do, because we have to build the streets. So, right now, our update is, we're not sure. So, what we're going to do on that one. Michael, did you want to add something?
Yeah, President Vargas, thank you very much. We need partners for this, the city's willingness to step up. There is some willingness to commit funds on the part of the port. I'm hoping that they might be willing to commit more, and if the public is interested, they could address the Port Commissioners for that. And also, the developer, Harcourt, again, has expressed some interest, at least in the district heating and also district cooling to a certain extent, but I think both those partners might benefit from hearing the support in the community nicely.
Thank you, Michael. And that was for information only. The fourth item we had today was the reappointment of our hearing examiner. Our hearing examiner, Sharon Rice, has been doing an excellent job. She is just about to reach her two-year term, expiring on January 26, 2017, and the committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, the motion in front of us, to approve the hearing examiner Sharon Rice's term. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. We have one set of minutes to approve, I believe. This is for December 5th, this is for city council regular meeting minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, moving along. Any discussion at all? No? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Older new business. Councilmember Hamel and then Councilmember Bornham. And I didn't see hands up here. And Knudsen, okay?
I just wanted to acknowledge your work as president this year. I wanted to thank you for your service. I've not sat in that chair, but it doesn't seem very easy. So, thank you for your leadership. Really, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Terry.
Yes, I had mentioned this smart, this afternoon, but I just want to mention again, just announcing that about the MLK celebration that will be held here in City Hall, January 16th at noon. Clyde Ford, who was the original founder of the MLK celebration here, will be back with us this year. As moderator and the speaker, Darryl Holaire from the Lemmy Tribe will be speaking. Caution Choirs will be singing, and there will be others speaking as well. And so, just want to encourage people to come on out for it.
Thanks, Terry. Gene.
Well, this is my usual end of the year thank you to everybody. I first want to start out with you. You came into this job smiley and bubbly, and you're leaving this job smiley and bubbly. And it's been a hard year, I understand, but it's also been a year of, it's been tough on all of us, but one of the things that is always better is when you have somebody in that chair that can lead us through that. So, thank you very much. And to the rest of the council, thank you. This group works very well together. We might have our child spats once in a while, but that doesn't, we're not here to be disagreeable. We're not here to disagree. We're here to do the right thing for the community. So, thank all of you for another great year. To the mayor, I know this is your fifth year, it probably feels like 50 to you, but thank you for all you've done in your five years of service. And to your staff, boy, what can I say about them? The best of the best, and I really sincerely mean that. I enjoy working with all of you and doing what we do. To the citizens, you know, we're here for one reason, and that is to keep this great city what it is, great. And it is, and it always will be. I've been on this earth for 61 years, and it's all been right here, and it's been, I just can't imagine being anywhere else. To the citizens, continue to have faith in us. Sometimes it's not pretty, sometimes it can be difficult, but as I said before, we're all here for one reason and one reason only, and that's to work together. So, send us your email, call us on the phone, knock on our doors, whatever it takes, and I wish everybody a happy holiday.
Thanks, Gene. Roxanne?
Well, this afternoon, Gene did something important that I wanted to echo. I really wanted to thank our Public Works Department for all the work that they're doing to maintain our streets, especially whenever we have winter storms or any kind of snow, wind-related storms. And then also wanted to encourage people to please be safe over the next couple of days as temperatures are dropping. The roads are going to be very slick, and I hope everyone will please be very careful. And also, thank you for allowing me to serve.
This afternoon, I thanked the city staff for all the amazing work and support and how we could not do this job without them. But I also really wanted to thank the council for all the work that they did this year. We really had a tremendous year. I just was doing a little bit of review of all of the things that we did, and just a few of the things is, we started with a resolution supporting the safety and protection of Planned Parenthood in Wacom County. We supported the tribes with the Dakota Access Pipeline. We started also the year with a tough one, going, oh, level of service, we're going to run out of money in two years, and had to look at, a really hard look at a lot of the things that we pay for in the city, which was not always comfortable. And then, of course, we completed a review of a 20-year, update of a 20-year comprehensive plan, which had eight very extensive chapters, and for most of us who had never done this before, it was a pretty big learning curve. And I just want to say that even whatever, up and down, and all the things that we experienced, I thought it was a tremendous experience. I am very proud of the work, especially all the things we did around equitability in our comprehensive plan, and I think that the city and the people of Bellingham, it will make a difference for their lives for many, many years to come. So, I thought that was all really fantastic, and wanted to commend you and thank you for all your efforts and your work on that. I also wanted to thank Mayor Kelly, who does an extraordinary job, and thank you for all your support and guidance. Even when you don't agree with me, you let me talk it out. So, thank you for everything you and your office does to support us. And then, as far as me being chair, I want to say that it has been kind of a tough year. It's had some ups and downs. You know, this job doesn't come with a manual. It's kind of learn-on-the-job, and you can make mistakes, and you learn from them. But through it all, I want to say that it is an absolute honor and privilege to serve with these other council members and to serve this city, because every decision I make is about what's the best thing for the city. And sometimes it's not always my favorite thing, but I know that long-term, I have to believe that it's the right thing for the city. And I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity, and again, it's an honor to serve this city.
And I just want to also say thanks to you, Pinky, for serving this year. People don't realize it's a tough job. It looks real simple when people set out in TV land and look up, and all you got to do is go through these agendas, but it's a whole lot more involved and tougher than it looks at times. It looks like council people usually vote all the same, and this year showed. That's not always the case, but it's not a bad thing. I truly think some of the best legislation comes about when you have differing opinions and you have to argue and debate and draw out the points from different people. When everyone thinks the same, you kind of get mushed in terms of legislation, I feel. So sometimes it's a good thing to be able to do that. And for anyone that thinks it's easy for anybody for setting up here and doing this, it's a whole lot harder than it looks at times, and so, you know, April, this is your first year, you know? Welcome to the club. But I have truly enjoyed working with everyone this year, and for everyone out there, have a happy holidays.
We forgot to thank Hurricane Barker for her first year, too.
Oh, I would be, I would be remiss, actually, in not thanking my staff. Whoopsie. So, our staff.
Yeah, that's true.
Marie and Mark, who do a terrific job of supporting us, and also Elizabeth, our city clerk, who manages all of the bumps that come with us, so thank you so much for that. Okay, anything else? I'm going to go off to our executive session. All right. So, a report out from our executive session today, potential property acquisition. Staff provide information on a potential property acquisition. I will entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of Right-Away and Trail Easement located at 2601 Birchwood Avenue, Maury's Drive-In Burgers property, is what most of you are familiar with, from Gang Bay and Lin Le Chan for $83,670 with an anticipated closing date of December 21st, 2016.
I so move.
Second.
Hey, you got one in.
We have a motion, any discussion?
I have a discussion. So, this was one of the first projects that ever brought me into politics here in Bellingham. It's a very unsafe corridor, and I remember walking my kids and our two dogs and just trying to navigate that whole space. And I also remember running down the trail and seeing a split in the trail when I first moved into the Birchwood neighborhood, and I took that split all the way down and got dead-ended underneath the bridge and no escape. And so, we worked hard with the neighborhood, and the staff was so great, and it really confirmed that you could make positive change in the city. So, to see this come to fruition and be sitting here in this chair is very exciting, and thank you to staff. I know that was an easy one, and it's been, I mean, 20 years in the making, so, much appreciated.
Thanks, April. Okay, so we have a motion to authorize the purchase of a Right-Away and Trail Easement located at 2601 Birchwood Avenue. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. We had another potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition for information and discussion only, and no action was taken. And that was the end of our committees. And with that, we are going to go to the mayor's report.
Thank you very much, Pinky, and thank you for presiding over the council. Thank you, council members, for always looking out after the best interests of the city. Thank my staff, who tries to work for everybody, and all of the rest of our staff, who is excellent. We have excellent people working for the city of Bellingham. I want to thank the board and commissioners that volunteer for our city. There's at least 200 that I appoint, and those people put in a lot of time. It's all on their own dime, and without them, we wouldn't have that pulse on the city that we do. So, I want to thank them. And then, all the citizens that are willing to come and speak at our meetings and to participate in our government. I think sometimes we do feel a little bit homogeneous, so I would encourage anyone who has any issues that they'd like to bring forward to remember that in this room, every opinion is respected and tolerated and listened to. So, don't worry if you think that you're one plum off the next guy. I use guy, like kind of generically. I always think I'm a guy. Anyway, so, I couldn't have ever picked a better place for my grandparents and great-grandparents to immigrate to, so, thank you, all of you, for allowing me to live here. Appreciate it. Second thing is, excuse me, an update on our emergency shelter. And I have notes here, so excuse me for kind of reading, but as you know, housing for everyone has been a number-one priority of mine. I would like to believe that the people that live, that work in our community can live in our community. That isn't the case right now. One of groups of people who live in our community but don't necessarily have housing are those that are the most vulnerable. And we have focused on a low-barrier, 24-hour, year-round shelter where we can pair people up with services to hopefully- people up with services to hopefully help break the cycle of homelessness as people go into more permanent housing. So, we have had a discussion all year with the Lighthouse Mission. I think we're coming down to what the reality of that discussion is really going to be, and how we really are going to partner, which I really appreciate. Because of the high use of the drop-in center, which you may have noticed as you're driving up Holly Street, Rick Qualls from the, excuse me, the community, what's it called? The Fountain Community Church, they are opening their doors to women and children, so that there'll be more room in the drop-in center and the Lighthouse Mission for the male residents, which we, we couldn't thank them for enough. And the Red Cross is already also stepping in. The Katie Franks, who's been kind of the point person for us in actually dealing with the providers, I want to give her thanks, as well as Samia and Tara Sundin, for being so, this was, this was a steep learning curve for them, because David Stallheim really was the point person before. So, we are actually building a community development department where we have more resources to focus on the community development housing issues that are, that are in our community. I really appreciate it. And I just thank all of our partners, because this is kind of a log, a long slog, and I don't think that we're going to see the low-barrier shelter as soon as I'd like to see it. But what we're doing is, we're showing that whether or not you have the perfect solution, you have to have a solution, and that's where our partners come in, and help us provide that housing that people, that people need. So, we'll keep you informed as we move along, and give you some statistics, so you can share those with your constituents. But I think that the cooperation is extremely good. And then, finally, we are going to be bringing the police department in to talk about some of the changes they've made in their policing model, along with the Downtown Bellingham Partnership and others who have been contacting our office and indicating their support and satisfaction with the different things that have been happening downtown. As you know, when we did the first public safety, public health and safety, those little things I used to do that seemed to get me in trouble, Community Solutions Work Group, which I love, and I'm going to do some more, the, the whole point was downtown. Now, that's spread to citywide, which is good, but it's nice to hear the downtown give us good feedback that what we're investing in, and what you're investing in with increase in police officers, hot teams, crisis management, those things are all making a difference in our, in our downtown. So, with that, the last thing I have is, we have three Planning and Development Commission members who are going to be, their, their terms are going to be up the end of December. I want to thank the council for extending the limitation on development occupations until April. There are two, Ali Tasi and Phyllis McKee, that would meet that criteria. Steve Crooks was picked off the neighborhood, mayor's neighborhood advisory group, so he does not meet that criteria. The other two people that we will be replacing, probably within that time period from February, or from January to April, will be Jeff Brown and Tom.
Grinstad.
As if I couldn't remember. And Tom Grinstad. They're the other two people. Tom, being an architect, would count towards the quota. Jeff, that isn't his full-time job, but as a landlord, people might think that he also had that bias, but they've all done a great job, and I hope that you'll approve. The people on the commission have done an excellent job for the city so far.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in front of us, any discussion? Okay, so, this is to approve the reappointment of Ali Tasi, Phyllis McKee, and Steve Crooks to the Planning and Development Commission. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. And happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. I've decided that what we should all do is, we should express what we celebrate to each other and make our community more diverse. So, that's, I do Merry Christmas, so just so you know.
Thank you, ancestors.
Thank you, ancestors. That's a good one, too. Okay, I hope you all have a nice holiday.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
All right. We have a motion in front of us to pass the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill 21386, an ordinance relating to the 2017-2018 biennial budget of the city of Bellingham, providing for the adoption of such budget pursuant to the terms of RCW 35.34.120, and setting the effective date.
Move third and final.
Second.
Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
April Barker.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Dan Hamill.
Aye.
Jean Knudsen.
Yes.
Ordinance passes, seven zero. Agenda Bill 21432, an ordinance of the city of Bellingham regarding planning commission membership, amending section 2.42.020 of the Bellingham Municipal Code.
Move third and final.
Second.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
April Barker.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Dan Hamill.
Aye.
Jean Knudsen.
Aye.
Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Ordinance passes, seven zero. Agenda Bill 21440, an ordinance accepting the donation of an easement for the operation and maintenance of the Baker Creek Estates Stormwater Facility.
Move third and final.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
April Barker.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Dan Hamill.
Aye.
Jean Knudsen.
Aye.
Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Ordinance passes, seven zero. Agenda Bill 21442, an ordinance amending the 2015-2016 adopted budget, recognizing a $295,029 decrease in revenue and estimated ending reserves in the general fund as a result of a refund of BNO tax overpayment. April Barker.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Dan Hamill.
Aye.
Jean Knudsen. Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Ordinance passes, seven zero.
Mayor Kelly.
Going to personal privilege, I would like to tell you that the budget is probably the biggest vote that we take every year, and I want to commend the council for taking seriously the, the position that the budget is in and acting so responsibly to pass it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I should have included that on our list, a two-year biannual budget is a pretty big deal, so, thank you for that. Thanks to all of you for joining us. Our next meeting is our reorganization meeting on January 4th. So, happy holidays to all of our citizens, be safe out there. We'll see you in 2017. We are adjourned.